On the media.
So Winker doesn't, so you don't become ahead of this, or yeah? Well, good. You have to, quite the busy number of years there. Good God.
Can you tell when you're ready?
Whenever you are.
Like a call, a meeting order, May 16th, 2016. And two, please rise and remove your hats. Follow me in the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. And three, public comments? Yes, sir?
Hi, San Moscow, 88 Perry Street. I wasn't able to be at the meeting two weeks ago because I was over at the SSB thing, but sorry, we brought up center. On Monday, the 25th of April, I was rather surprised, I was headed out of town. I was rather surprised to see lots of signs around at 10:30 in the morning telling me that Putnam had a vote today. Given that the actual date of the primary election is Tuesday, I thought it was awfully early for the signs to be out. I'm not sure who's responsible for doing that, but it seems beginning earlier every year. I was a little nonplussed at that. Thank you.
Okay, seven, you can blame the town administrator for that. Oh, just because I wanted to pick up your. I had before approval of the minutes, May 2, 2016.
I made the motion that we approved the minutes with one, with one change under Cargill Falls dam executive session. I'd like to add that the proposed budget was discussed in executive session.
Okay.
All second.
Motion made, seven, approve the minutes with the petition that the budget was discussed in the executive session. Fowlers, a favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Petitions of communications, any doubt?
None.
Good. General Government Committee. Alma?
We await our next meeting.
Which will be? June 2nd?
No, 6th.
June 6th. June 6th.
June 6th, okay. Charter Revision Commission, consider sending Charter Revision Committee suggestions to the board, to the Charter Revision Commission. Vote as required.
I thought you already did that.
You accept the input, just to bring forward. Can I be willing to do that on behalf of the board if you want?
So move.
Motion made, seven, to bring the Charter Revision Commission suggestions to the Charter Revision Commission. Any discussion? All those in favor?
No.
Anybody opposed? Any extensions? Okay. Special Service District Board. Renee?
Yep, I forgot to bring my notes with me, so I apologize for lack of detail. On the very good side, we won a community, New England Community Police and War this year. We and, I think Jamestown, Rhode Island? I'm looking for Norm to see if he remembers. That was one of the very good things. The streetlights, someone else wanted to do a presentation on streetlights, so that's ongoing. And as I mentioned before, it's something we're gonna have to look at for the rest of the town eventually. Probably sooner than later. Also, there is going to be a chicken parm benefit dinner on Saturday, June 11th for one of our firefighters who's having some health issues. Norm, if you could sign in.
Me Captain Chris Collins, who's a mechanic, a full-time mechanic at King Olesmobil. He is having a very severe problem with pancreatitis and was, wasn't still near death. The man is 41 years old. He is an excellent, excellent man. Nice family, nice personality. He's going through a very tough time, so we're looking to raise as much money as possible on his behalf to help his wife with his, her finances.
Tickets are 10 bucks apiece. They're ready for sale down at the fire station. I already bought my two. I'll feed my husband while I'm out of town for a couple of days. And I encourage all of you to get your own tickets and support this. Yes, yeah.
He's the one that's.
Well, the dinner isn't, the dinner is, it's just gonna be takeout from KFC.
Right, yeah.
But they're for sale down, if you go down to the firehouse when someone's there, they have tickets.
He's the one that does the off-camera production?
Yes, he was here making that present, presentation, yeah.
Thank you, Neil.
Yeah, that's all I can remember offhand without my notes.
Okay, thanks for that. Public Facilities Study Committee. Scott? Myself, Doug, met at Owen, at Tar Park to go over the LLB, whatever they're doing there, I have no idea. But Doug, why don't you give a report on that? Because the meeting was here first, then it came back here. And with 15 different opinions, I went north to Lattacy Street. I had enough of that. So whatever they want to do, I'll back it. Bill?
Thank you. Yeah, the committee met over at Owen Tar because obviously that's the potential site for the new library town hall complex. And all the other groups that had buy-in to the project, Aspen Archistor, the society, library people, and others were there as well. Just so we could get or give everyone a visual of the size and scope of the piece of property as it pertains to the building that we want to put on there. A lot of people gave their input. And then we recessed back to here, had a lengthy meeting on options. And as it stands now, nothing's set in stone, obviously. But I think we're making headway. We're, we're gelling as a committee with our ideas and things are slowly coming together. I kind of look at it as though, anybody remember the movie Terminator 2? When the liquid metal guy gets shot to pieces? Arnold Schwarzenegger says, hasta la vista, baby, and then the guy gets shot and blown up. Well, all the ideas are starting to pool back together again. And pretty soon Terminator 2 will rise and we'll have an actual building to look at, so.
And I will confess, I put a little B in the V on it of the agent commission because at, they've been doing forums at various locations to talk to some of the seniors in town. And a lot of them have been saying they want a senior center. And I said, you know, if you want to talk about a senior center, the people who talk to are the facilities folks. And I know a couple of, at least one of them did show up. So I'll, I will both apologize and take credit for that. And hopefully you can all work together and.
Well, I, I think what came out of that meeting the other day that I think the architects and everybody was there was in agreement to probably try to do the senior community center just to use the one room we're gonna have for maybe the selectmen chambers. They got one built on the top of it. And they, they can divide into three different sections. You know, it's just an idea. And I think that's probably a pretty good idea. Yeah, I gotta do a throw a kitchen in.
Yeah.
You know, I hope.
Norm, you're in the building committee, you're on the Facilities Committee?
I am. Only one more comment, Doug, is that everybody has to understand that that building facility doesn't move forward until we develop the recreation fields. Typically behind the school system. That has to be done and completed first before we. So everything is in a planning stage right now with the intent that that happens. But that's number one. We have to reproduce those fields.
You know, everybody's got all these ideas. And I asked the architect, give me the low wall and give me the high wall. How much is this gonna cost? And of course, he skidded around the issue. And when he started talking about square footage, you multiply that by $400 a square foot, it's about $16.4 million if it stays at the present number that he gave us. I don't know if the town needs that much space. I don't know if the people could swallow $16 million. I have no idea where it's going. And there's a lot of stuff on the backs of people in Putnam with the, you know, $40 million for the pipes for the water. You got $36 million for the school. That's gonna hit people's pot books next year. Even though the YMCA is not a Putnam thing, it's still part of, and a lot of people donated money to that thing. So it's a big nut. And I don't know, you know, I will support whatever the Facilities Committee plans to do. Whether it's one-story, two-story, just the library, just the town hall. I don't know what they're gonna do. I'm ex-official member and I give them a lot of credit because they put a lot of hours in. And there's a lot of different experts in different fields working on this committee. But I think you have to look at the cost first of all. I think that's a lot of money.
If I may, and these young.
You may, you're on the Facilities Committee.
These young were all there and they witnessed. I think the, the number for square footage that he gave out was a very generous number. And I think now he's gonna go back and he's going to refine things. I know he did the same thing with me when I sat down with him. It was a very generous offer for the Fire Marshal's office. And if I can get half of that, I'd be thrilled. So I think he's gonna refine things, cut things down.
I hope so. And I, you know, I really don't understand this guy. He's talking about giving Jerry Bosley an office in the town hall. Jerry's on Fox Road. He doesn't need an office in the town, you know? You take that square footage and throw it out the window.
He also talked the same way about the Water Pollution Control Authority and their personnel and a couple of other people, same thing.
He knows it now.
Yeah.
Which is good. And I gotta pare it down a little bit, I hope.
Yeah.
Because I, again, I think it's, it would be a huge nut for people's wallet. What a man's opinion. Okay.
Mayor?
Yes!
Relay to the Public Putnam Facility Study Group. If it's the desire of the, the selectmen, we would like, I would like to propose going into executive session for the purposes of sale of property.
You would like to add, you would like someone to make a motion to add sale of property?
Right.
Silver?
And invite Doug.
Any other session? Is there a motion in second to add sale of property in the executive session? Discussion? See not all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? I just have a sole order. That'll go under C or whatever it is.
Okay. Economic and Community Development, we have Delphah Berry here. Delphah?
I'm about to report, any questions?
I have no question to report, but Delphah, myself, Doug Cutler, Willie Bosley, and Jerry Bosley met in my office this week to go over the pocket parks.
All parks.
Who?
All parks.
All parks. Especially with pocket parks, because I did bring some selectmen from different towns over. And they loved our pocket parks, but they said they were disgusting, overgrown, and needed trimming, and they were right. So we got, we devised a plan, who owns what, who's gonna do what? Where we're gonna get this, where we're gonna get that. And it seems to be working out between Jerry and Willie. So I think people are gonna see a big, big improvement at the one across from the church, the one Miller Park across from buildings, and all the little parks, including Rotary Park and all the other parks we have. So I think it was a good meeting, a plus came out of it. Anybody have any questions for Delphah on the Economic and Development?
I actually have a question for Delphah that's not on her report, but that she may know about. In the building officials' report, they mention upgrades by the new owners at the Kings Inn. Are these really new owners, or?
That, that build, that property was sold, I'm thinking eight months ago, something like that. And there are quite a few code violations. And they really need to bring that up too. I know that the Fire Marshal and I have had the discussion too. And Norm has been over there to check certain things out. My big concern right now too is that there are borders staying there, so.
Well, as in like, like an SRO kind of thing, or?
I don't know what an SRO is.
It's like in New York, there are single-room occupancy hotels where people sort of live indefinitely?
Yes. And, and there's no permitting for that, and it's, yes.
I thought SRO is standing room only. You had a question, Scott?
I had a question. Any, in our last or maybe two meetings ago, in the discussion at Cargill Falls, we were curious about the plans or the scheduling of when the actual renovation of the mill is gonna start. Any update you can give us on that?
Not until the remediation that we're cleaning up is done. And we had to amend that contract, so we had to go back to the state and do all the paperwork over. Attorney St. Ange is working on that with the state's attorneys. And he and I actually met this morning to finalize all the documentation. It was, it's pretty much Scott and the attorney's hands.
Okay. Satisfied yourself?
It can't happen fast enough for me.
Okay, Building Official and Z E O, anybody have any questions?
Is 137, 139 Woodstock, is that still the third floor apartment situation?
Yeah.
That place should be padlocked. And hasn't been, you know? Bill has a lot on his plate and our zoning enforcement officer, our billing official, has been over there a thousand times.
Right.
And from what I understand, it's in the hands of the court. And you know how lawyers work.
I know how courts work even without the attorney. He's implementing pretty slow.
Town Planers Report, any questions?
Are we doing an shortening up the, the plan of conservation and getting them to match things that Doug needs for potential grants?
I don't wanna interrupt you, but that's coming up on the, on the number 10.
Okay. Do you want us to give an update then? Okay, good.
Okay, let's wait till then. Town Administrators Report, anybody have any question on Doug's letter report? Okay, C and L is about unfinished business. The Q R T P, Douglas?
Things are basically done. The work is progressing on the, the extension of the River Trail on the east side of the Point of Bog from the Dog Park down to the Wheeler Brader Bridge. A lot of clearing has gone on there. They're doing the, you know, there's also gonna be a parking lot that, just as you get into the entrance to the Wheeler Brader Bridge. And that will be parking for a boat launch. There'll be a canoe and kayak launch there and also for fishing purposes. And that project should be wrapped up by end of July at least. And the project is done on the west side of the Point of Bog. So it's always, it's done on the west, west side. All we need is the east, east connection.
So when it's done, where will I be able to walk?
You'll be able to walk to, all the way to the end of our property on the Tech Park.
Okay.
And then we have to get, we have to go out there and get some mileage.
And it, and when is it gonna connect to the airline trail?
As soon as Pomfret does their thing, which is the sewer line.
Okay. Is the airline trail the one that goes above it?
Yes.
Okay. What was the total cost, or what is the total cost?
For the Tech Park?
No, for.
The river trail?
The river trail.
This part was $230. The one on the west side was about $128. And we're doing about $15,000 on the bridge itself. So work on the switch.
$250?
$128, did I say? Was there, you said, the first number was $238. Then I think it's $130, let's say $130 for the west side. And then about 15 to 20 on the bridge itself.
So $400. That's an awful lot of money for a walking trail.
Okay. Armory Development, Doug Cutler, myself, Phil St. Ange, Attorney Higgins, Alan Rosson, and some members of the NOW board met in Higgins' office to discuss the new interest in the armory. And I'll let Doug give you a synopsis, if you would, of what the progress is so far.
It's basically back that NOW has expressed an interest. And this basically came out of Public Facilities Study Committee meeting. Some talk about tearing it down. And NOW thinks that, you know, it seems to be a waste of the building just to tear it down. And if there's a way that they can. It's basically back to the original idea, probably not as extensive on NOW's part, but maybe to do a license agree, not a license agreement, but a service agreement with NOW, where they'd be responsible for any costs associated with renovating the building. And their approach would basically be a phased-in approach. As, you know, as they would do some initial, or meet their deeds initially and then see how the project develops and do further work on that. So it's back in their hands now. We had a very, unfortunately, we had a very extensive, extensive service agreement that was sort of onerous. And it's my fault, I use a template from another town. And that, there's always a danger of using a template from another town, so. But I think we can have a much simpler version and come to agree with NOW. And of course, this has to come back to the town, to the board of selectmen. It has to go to the town meeting. Because whenever you give up your right to use of any town facility, you have to go through a town meeting process. But it will not be a lease, because that will trigger the reversion clause under the legislation that, where they gave the deed to the town.
Thanks, Doug. Anybody have any questions? Okay, moving on. We'll skip C because that's going in the executive session. Let's go to D, Public Plan of Conservation and Development. Scott, do you have any questions?
Yeah, it was just, how are we, how are we making out in terms of giving us an update? Done.
As far as update?
What?
The question you had before?
The question was, if you remember when Tim Ford was here, the directive the Board of Selectmen and Doug gave you was to, to condense the document and also incorporate specifics in the, in the document so that if we were gonna refer to it in the future, it would be applicable for grants on certain projects that Doug wanted.
We're working that.
What's that?
We did work on that, Doug, I did. Far as short, we get, I, you know, I think we have to take it before the planning commission and that one and see where they, they go with that.
So is it, is it going on the night, is it going on Thursday, or? So is it ready?
It's, the final document was already, you know, the draft document.
The one that he had? Yeah, the one, so we haven't changed it since then?
Well, you can't.
You can't?
Because you can't change anything until in advance of the public hearing. I mean, there's language that incorporate that would be presented to the public hearing. I would rather that changes than this mention. And there's, Doug's been working on some other things to fine-tune the document. It has, because there was already a draft document out there that's already concluded by the DCOG and that was published or available for, you know, information. That, that's the document that the public hearing has to review. And then anything that, any suggestions will come through the public hearing.
Gotcha.
But the plan is, once that public hearing is passed, to go ahead and pare down the plan, correct? That's the plan.
That's the plan. Okay, anybody else have any questions? Okay, let's move on. Grant considerations and up to. No, no, excuse me. Fiscal year 2016-17 town of Putnam budget. Can you give an update on that something?
We have made the changes to the budget that were acted on by the Board of Finance. I've had a number of different eyes look at it. Scott was good enough to take a look at it. And I think we're back at what the Board of Finance approved. Now again, that's what was approved by the Board of Finance out there at April 25th meeting. That does not mean anything in terms of what the General Assembly did to take, you know, reduce funding to the town or, so. But that was the document that was approved. That was the $10,000 for the Fire Marshal's office, the reduction by $185,000 for the truck. Put back $45,500 for borrowing on the Ashland Hill. What's the other one? Oh, and $300,000 from the Ashland River.
Okay.
And you're, you're borrowing 220 because they added 35 for a recreation trail. You're amortizing over five years at 1%.
So your numbers say we're at?
10,242,416.
That's what has to be raised by 10%.
That, well, that's the number that the Board of Finance talked about on April 25th. And I guess that's what they're gonna start with at the public hearing on Monday, on the 4th. And then go from there.
And that mill rate, that 45.5 comes out to 17.02, right?
Yes. In other words, if using a 97% collection rate, that would be 17.02, which would be a .60 mill increase or 3.7%.
Questions? On that same end, I was in contact all day today with CCM. And it looks like the 205,000 is gonna be the cement number for us. It was a differential, Danny thought it would be a lot more, but they recalculated and we're, we're looking to lose. I have the breakdown here for you, I'll just quickly read it. Adult education goes from 71,000 to 66,000. The ECS grant goes from 8,497,000 to 8,386,000. So that's a $111,000 loss. We lost a total of $148,633 in public school transportation. It's totally wiped out, we lost that. Locep stays the same. Mohegan, peak-up Mohegan grant, basically we lost $10,000. The college and hospitals, we lost 6,000. The MRSA stays the same. So we went from 9,543,000 to 9,337. So a total loss of 2.2%, or in actual dollars, 205,451. So we didn't get whacked as, as hard as other places. So we made out pretty well. And for some reason, Day Kimball and Milford Hospital were like protected. I don't know why, but they didn't get hit like the other hospitals. They were put in that pool, so.
The other thing that we have to follow is the implementer bills, which is sometimes, that's where you get into some problems, so. We gotta make sure that because they have this car tax sharing and then there's, then there's a cap on your municipal spending cap. And we have to be aware of that. And the one thing I think we found out is when we did a look, the Connecticut Bureau had a listing of all the towns. And out of 169 towns, we're like, what, 42nd, 42nd town from the bottom in terms of the impact on, on towns. So that means there are whatever number of towns above us either had to increase, either had an increase or a lesser amount of reduced, so.
And what really, really bothers me, and it bothers Rivero and other state reps more, is that this SB 1, this car tax thing, affects 20 towns who get money. 149 towns get penalized, which makes no sense. It's like nine towns get a huge increase in ECS grants and the other 160 get a reduction. If you could figure, and they're all affluent towns. We're not talking about Priority School. We're talking about Madison, Glastonbury, Greenwich. They're getting a big boost. Penalties of towns take a beat. So if you could give me some clarification on that, I'd be very happy. I've asked everybody in Hartford to explain that and they can't. And Danny's still trying to get the formula and how they figured it out, and they won't give him the formula.
The problem is, and I think it comes right down to the fact is that Putnam is so well.
Right.
You take the state average of mill rates, they, you know, they do some calculation where, you know, it's. And of course, they don't include the special services district, they only include the town's mill.
But when you factor in the anglic number, which is the town's ability to pay, everything's within proportion.
Yeah.
So even though the mill rate's low, our population and their ability to pay is all in within one.
So it's a, it's a crazy, crazy formula. They did knock about $2 billion off bonding, so we'll see some relief, but not much.
But at least they didn't hit Day Kimball this time.
Right, they were protected for some reason. All right, number 11, grant consideration updates, anything, any grants?
I have nothing here.
Okay. New Business, 12. Consider the appointment of unaffiliated Jennifer Beckett, 86, 68 Vienn Street, to the Public Arts Council. Motion made, seven, anybody have any problem with Jennifer? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Jen, you're on. 12B, consider approval of the week, May 15th to 21st, National Prevention Week in Putnam.
So move.
What do we prevent?
Okay, remember that, it's National Prevention.
National Prevention Week.
There you go, you got it with you. I'm not gonna read this whole thing. It's something that Doug's doing that now that he's a reform addict and he's really pushing. Pushing pride, so. Pushing pride. So we're happy.
The rumors that Tony does.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Consider the same date for town meeting to consider act upon recommendation of board of finance.
June 6th.
June 6th will be our regular meeting?
And we'll have it at school, right here.
Public hearing is here.
What was that?
Consideration of the date for a town meeting.
In terms of the location.
Public hearing before that.
The public hearing is here, on the 23rd. You could probably wait to see what the turnout is.
We should submit it, we should have put it in the paper, don't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I don't, I won't have to put it in until the Friday after.
So the hearing is the 23rd here. And the date is June 6th.
If we, if we have it at the auditorium at the middle school, is there any way we could have our meeting, like in the library?
Oh, yeah.
Instead of in the, because I can't hear a thing. The way, I can't see a thing with the lighting and we're all in the room.
You're on the building committee with the bad lighting.
Yeah, but, but if we could have it in the library upstairs and then just come down or something, you know what I'm saying? Because that's, that's a terrible place to have a meeting.
Well, it's also a tough time for the school to give us space.
Right. I mean, that's what I'm saying, if, if it's available. I mean, the library's where we had the board of ed meetings, very nice up there.
So you recommend that we go, we have our, our, our June meeting, June 6th at the library at the middle school?
At the middle school and then come down and recess for the town meeting. And I think that way we have, we have our bases covered if there's a huge turnout.
That sounds good.
Because a fire marshal will get on our case if we don't worry about people in here.
45 is the limit here. So you're making that as a motion?
So moved.
If it's available.
If it's available.
Okay, if available, we'll have our meeting June 6th at the middle school library and then we'll convene down at the middle school auditorium for the annual town meeting.
Right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have a sole. If it's available, if it's not, we'll find something else. Our field. Okay. D, approval of bills. Owen?
Make the motion we pay out for bills.
Second. Any bills under consideration?
They all pass with flying colors.
Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Ayes have a sole order. E, all other businesses will often come before such reports. Everybody have any other business? Seeing none? Okay, let's move on to public comments. Anyone like to speak or make, have a question? Seeing none? Good. I'm gonna ask Denise to put under 13 on all the agendas, what's called announcements. I have a bunch of them. First Friday was canceled as most people know, but Delphah and I went to a ribbon cutting for A and L on Montgomery Ward's second floor. The young lady does products for, helps her face and put bath oil-
Organic skincare.
Organic skincare, which I need. So it was very nice and she had, she brought about 30 people from Rhode Island. It was very nice before the rains came. On May 10th, I went to the CCM meeting in Cromwell and again, it was just total frustration because the state never gave CCM, what was going on? May 11th, we had our annual town meeting. May 12th, I met with Chuck Mahoney and Nora Gopri to be the first person to pay for a poppy with the poppy coin. That'll be in the paper shortly. May 14th was the Putnam Science Academy graduation. On May 18th, if some of you remember Calvin Heath, Calvin Heath died, they're gonna have a medal ceremony at the war memorial and then we're going to the library to convene and have other things to do with that. On May 19th, we received the Small Cities Drinking Water Merit Award, which for those people who live in the district will say, how in the hell did we get that?
Now, everybody's invited here, so it's 12 o'clock is the lunch and-
Where is the lunch? Everything will be here?
Right here.
So all the selectmen are invited here for 12 o'clock lunch and then awards ceremony.
Awards to proceed.
Okay. And on May 20th, it's the Armed Forces Day at the AquaTurf, which Doug's gone and my proxy, I think, will be Jerry Bosley, taking my spot, which is a great thing. I've gone three years in a row and it's fantastic. Those are all the announcements I have. We have to go. Somebody needs a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Which one are we going in for first? Should we move together? Well, before we go into executive session, I just want to apologize to all the boards of, I mean, all the selectmen. I didn't realize, my ignorance, that I, all I wanted to do was make sure that all the selectmen were up to date on the controversy. What was, what was the mill rate? And in a way, even though Bill St. Ange said I should have did it in the regular session, I'm happy we did it because all the media was here and they heard it anyhow because they were yelling and screaming. But I apologize for bringing that up and I just wanted to make sure we were on the same page. We were and what can I tell you? If you'd like to fine me $3, that's fine. Okay, so we need a motion to go to session.
So my motion is to adjourn to executive session on both the sale of property and Cargill Falls ban, inviting both-
It has to be strategy and negotiation through respect of pending claims or pending litigation.
Yes, indeed. Yes. Inviting Doug on both and I'm guessing Delphah on sale of property? No? Just Delphah?
No.
Okay. It's usually you for sale of property.
You're second on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any questions? Should we recess instead of on?
Resess.
Resess, yeah.
Okay, Delphah, before you talk about the bridge, that this board voted against, the flower bridge right here won it too.
I voted in favor of the flower bridge.
I think you're gonna forget that. I'm never gonna forget that.
He was in favor of the flower bridge.
Mrs. Steinberg, how are you today?
Good, Jim?
Pleasure.
How are you?
Good.
I think just a little singing that camera one. Seeking messages.
Wait a minute.
Teala. All right. You picked right up on that, didn't you? Yeah, I certainly did.